Great, six o'clock, let's raise for the flag, please. Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, um, I forgot to take my mission statement off here, I should have this down now. Too many papers, guys, too many papers, I apologize, and here I was doing it. All right, in partnership with communities, the mission of the Dilworth-Lincoln School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect so they become self-directed, responsible lifelong members. All right, roll call, all board members except David is present, he is going to be coming in a few minutes later, so he'll be walking in, and we have Principal Lefard with us today, Superintendent Ferguson, and then we have Roseanne Holness, our early childhood coordinator, so we're excited to hear from her. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda? First of all, are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
No changes. All right, is there a motion?
So.
Motion by Nicole, there is a second.
Second.
Second by Amy, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. All right, no public comments tonight, rebel recognition, Amy, what do you got?
I have one thing, let's see here, the speech team, seven speakers won their way to virtual state, five won their way to the final round, Maggie Anderson, seventh in grade speeches, Sophie Hunter, third in oratory, Marissa John, sixth in poetry, Braden Johnson, eighth in exam, maybe O'Hara, fifth in drama, and other contestants were Caleb Auding, in discussion, and Hannah, how is it, let me see, in prose.
Well, that sounds awesome, congratulations to them. And we're going to recognize our administration tonight, in April, we did this last year too, and we just want to recognize our administration for their hard work this past year, and I was looking, Amy said, you're always going to put up speeches, why don't you come up with a speech, and I was trying to find inspiration, but I found this and I thought this was very fitting, nine things great leaders say every day. One, this is the situation. Two, here's what we're doing. Three, what do you need? Four, tell me more. Five, remember our values. Six, I trust you. Seven, you can count on me. Eight, we can do better. And nine, let's celebrate. So, leadership is hard, it's a calling, you don't, you're not always the most popular person in the room, but you're doing what's best and what you think is best for the school district, so we want to thank all our administration for your staying positive this past year in light of the many challenges, so, thank you to all, we have a few of you here, so, Amy's got, why don't you give Brian a gift there? So, our administrators are always so busy, we have kindergarten roundup tonight, but we just wanted to take this time in April to recognize you guys, so, thank you for all your work.
And it's the least that they've been here, Amy. Because they're so, it's so busy in this.
Yep, yep, so, anyway, we want to stop and do that quick, so, thank you, guys. All right, let's move on to reports here.
Sorry, I wanted to thank Tracy for putting on a really good father-daughter dance last night, I saw, I was there, of course, with my little son.
Awesome.
Seeing all the happiness and joy on those little girls' faces, especially the ones that just got to go out through there for the first time, was adorable, and I know it was a lot of extra work to kind of meet the guidelines and everything, but she put on a good show.
Wonderful, thank you.
She's creative.
Awesome, yeah, I saw a few of the set of pictures through Instagram or whatever, and I just thought it was, you know, very nice to have it in the, more space in the gym, and she departs it so nice, so.
There were lots of people out helping out, and so, it was good.
Good, and weather's going to be nice this coming weekend, so our high schoolers should be able to enjoy prom on Saturday, so, seventy-one, so hopefully that holds, and it's not too windy, so the girls' pictures are pretty good, so. Okay, let's move on to six point one, early childhood, Roseanne.
I handed out this little sheet in my notes that I was going to go over, and I saw all of you. Part of the week, we're finishing up the end of another school year, maybe it's last of our preschool classes, I can't believe it, just this week, we're sending out our parent surveys to all of our families, so we get feedback on our programs, they chat and wolf that they can seal and put the survey back into the child back anonymously, and we'll just want all the in-wolfs to just put some parent feedback on our programs. Been working hard assisting the elementary offices, lots of phone calls and emails between Jamie, Sarah, and I, working on locating all those kindergarten students for kindergarten registration, we've really been pushing those families to get them registered, and they always don't realize how important it is to get their registrations in as early as possible, they don't realize that the school is working on planning their class sizes and home days and to each of each, so, really been pushing those families to get registered. I think quite a few on the list that I've been x-ing off, and I've noticed that that is the spreadsheet, so happy to have a few of those showing up on that spreadsheet. Also, with kindergarten, we've really been working since last year, we didn't have a lot of those opportunities to do early childhood screenings, especially in the spring once COVID hit, in March, we really shut down the screenings then. This fall, we did a couple days of some smaller group screenings of our kids attending our programs. Other than that, I've been doing individual appointments for all of our families that need screens, really concentrating on those kindergartners that will be coming in, making sure they get screened, so that if there are any developmental delays that give us some that goes, we want us to go testing, and we can truly get them identified with them to help that though, we'll do before starting kindergarten. Happy to say, I don't think I've been down to this few, but of a hundred and, well, now a hundred and three on the spreadsheet of kindergartners that have registered for kindergarten, I'm down to five that I need to get together for screening, so, I believe it was twenty-two kindergartners, yes, twenty-two kindergartners I screened this fall that had entered kindergarten, not screened yet, so to be down to just five left at the end of the week was making me feel pretty good, hopefully I won't have to do so many kindergartners this fall, catching up with those. We are doing our registrations for our Fall 2021 school ordinance in our top classes, those registrations are rolling in, fun to see some new names, new families that are coming with the program, excited to meet those new families. Looking forward to finalizing classes, finalizing those classes will offer Fall 22 due to that expansion of having an extra classroom, so be looking for me next fall, as we're looking at doing some program expansion and looking at what we're able to offer for our school classes. Also, I'm not sure if the nurses talked about this at the last, at the last school board meeting, but there's a new little technology, a vision screener that we have at the school district, one for each site, super excited to use it, last Wednesday, I had some time to do some online training on it, it's a vision screener where, I actually have a picture of it, that looks like this, has a smiley face on the front, but you're able to scan the child's eyes, and it will give you, it takes ten seconds on those child eyes, and it will give you a print-off that you're able to print off of a child, it will check out for far sightedness, deer sightedness, stigmatism, lazy eye, all sorts of different eye issues that a child may not be able to tell, so we're not even in the screen, we're doing a visual acuity that we're able to find, so to have this technology to be able to do screenings, also, as we're screening little ones, and it gets to be at the end of the screening, if we're doing a vision, are they seeing the shapes, are they getting tired of the screening, so it'll, it's a really great tool that we're going to be able to access, doing those early child screenings, and getting a more accurate assessment of their vision. It actually will do work on children six months of age and older, so our Kelsey Kramer, our birth to three early childhood specialized teacher, mentioned to me she was, who should be able to come into the home is when we have a referral on a child birth to three and check the vision, and if a parent has concerns about vision, because vision problems can compete so much in development, and we're not sure, is it a vision problem, is it something processing wise, it's a wonderful tool that we're going to be able to access to really help the kids, and just checking for those vision problems.
That's awesome.
Wait, I have, we have not worked, I haven't tried with a child yet, I know Beth and Kayla have, but we were doing ours completely different, Zach one of this, I need to check your eyes. We got to just practicing with it, it's very touchy and just having the right angle, but it's very step-by-step, and it will give you just an amazing haul of information, and checking a variety of different eye issues that could come up, it's the first type to have. Plus, basically, they're on screen, I don't know what it changes, we're just going with the flow, things have been going very well in preschool, so.
Well, we know we started a wonderful program, so.
And you said access to that screener is through?
The nurses' offices, they have each nurse, each, one we will scan each of the nurses' offices, so that they're able to use that during when we do our early childhood screenings, as well as, you know, if we have a whole bit of like a specialized child that we're concerned about, and we want to be testing on the state of the vision, great training videos right online to learn how the machine and how it works, also found a lot of great handouts on the different conditions that it can refer to, so it'll give us either a pass or refer, and then if it's a refer, we're able to, it records this on an S E card, then we're able to take to our computer and print it out, and a parent will be able to take this print-off then to an ophthalmologist or optometrist for further diagnosis, because an amazing amount of information and then twenty-second scan of those eyes, not even twenty seconds, it's just almost immediate, and once you get it lined up at both peoples, the measurements it takes is just absolutely amazing, so it's a, it's a fun, it'll be a really nice helpful tool to have, and with the vision of all ages, because very to use this with elementary ages and up, is for six months, I'll work through adults.
These, these are the ones that they put in their positions for, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, so.
And we'll go over that at the next meeting, as far as by that point, we should have all, everything in the cap, and by that point, we should know exactly how much of our S R funds we can use, or is that the policy, but that one, we know, we can run that through, so, it's a good thing to have.
Wonderful thing to have.
There's profit.
Anybody have any questions for Roseanne? Well, thank you for coming over tonight, it was good to see, we don't get to see you every afternoon, so good to see you. Thanks for taking care of our little ones. All right, next, we have our food service report, it's in your package, Chelsea put it in your package, so if you already want to pull it out, I'll just kind of briefly do an update for the public, and you watch, watch this, per the USDA, per the USDA, for the upcoming school year, we're able to provide free breakfast and lunch to all students by operating them under the same seamless summer option for next year. Again, if your students want extra milk, extra entrees, that, that's what would be charged to their lunch account, other than that, all meals are free. I'm just going to skip down to the Minnesota Department of Aider Culture Rapid Release Grant Update, Chelsea is great at applying for these grants, a grant of $5,000 was provided to assist school district to expand purchasing for Minnesota producers during the COVID-19 pandemic, she was able to use the funds to purchase more locally growing watermelon from melon head farms this past fall, she also purchased a bull cow grass fed from a local farmer, Craig Burns, and had all the meat processed into ground beef, and was delivered the end of the, end of March, so, that's awesome. And then the Partnership for Health Grant, she applied for a second combi oven, and on February sixteen, she was awarded the grant for, that covered $20,963.06 towards a combi oven, combi oven, to continue to help and support our farm-to-school initiative. The oven is installed and up and running, so, she is great at these grants, I'm telling you what. Anything, anybody else saw on there that I didn't point out? I think we're good. All right, six point three, board committee reports, who has had some meetings? Were you shaking your head? I think we can just talk about last week's work session, just briefly, we had a great work session with J L G, our architect Lee, and then Matt from Comstock, they came in and gave us some updated timelines for the community, so I haven't seen that they're up yet, but I know John Jacobson, our technology director, is working with them to get those updated, and then as well, get some new boards made, updated boards to put in the lobbies for the public to view. And then the second half of our meeting was in regards to the administration piece next year, as many in the public may have heard, our middle school principal Heidi Pritchley will be leaving at the end of the year, so, we wish her well, but we have some things to fill, so, Shannon was not able to be here tonight, so he asked if I would read a statement about his plans for next fall, as far as administration goes, so, bear with me while I pull this up here, so, this is from incoming Superintendent Shannon Hunstead, he'll be starting July first, first off, he said he want to thank the D G F school board, Superintendent Ferguson, and the rest of the administration cabinet for their support and patience over the last couple of months, I am extremely excited to get started at D G F this summer. I know there have been community member staff, except for who are wondering how middle school principal Heidi Pritchley will be replaced, and what will be happening to the current principal positions, if anything. We had our board work session last week, and we determined that we would be pursuing the hiring of two assistant principals, the boards will, the board will take action on that tonight, approving that, and the final, after that decision is made, those positions will be posted soon. In regards to the current principals with all that is and will be happening, I have decided to leave the current principals in their current positions slash locations, and have the new assistant principals support them as we navigate the next twelve months. I want to specifically thank Margot, Joe, Heidi, and Wayne for their patience with me, and taking time out of their busy schedules to meet with me over the last couple of weeks. Thank you, and have a great night, Shannon Hunstead. So, I'm sure there will be further questions coming forward with that being said, but I think the gist of it is he wants to be down here and understand what his administration strengths are, so, for, he's not here to defend himself tonight, so I guess I'm not going to ask if there's any questions, so we'll have to wait till we visit with him, but, that's a C. All right, on to our superintendent over here, what is your report tonight?
So, you have a few handouts, most of this is associated with some of the reports that came out on the S R three funds, to put it in perspective, when you, when you see these.
Does everybody have one?
Because I had ten, we have so.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, there is, there's a few different handouts in this, the first one is the fact sheet, and it's a really, really good summary on the differences between S R one, S R two, S R three, and how you can utilize the funds. I don't expect the board to become experts on it, there's no reason for you to become experts on it, but it's something that we will be spending a lot of time this week, and I think this is a process that is going to have to, you know, initially, before school gets out, a lot of this will be looking at, what do we do for the summer? And then as the transition comes in, and you look at the work session in June, a perfect time to be planning out all of fiscal twenty-two and twenty-three, going into twenty-four, because when you put this in perspective on the total funds, and that's why I gave you, there's three different handouts, the second one is, so, the first one is right from U S Department of Ed, actually, the second one is from M R E A, which is, again, it's just four pages, but again, a good Q and A, and the third one is the front and back, I just took the two sheets, and you can see my scratching, because you don't see the headings on it, but you can see the amounts receiving that for D G F, S R one, the CARES money, basically, about a hundred and seven thousand, now, when this sheet came out, this second one for the S R two, that was the approximation at that time, that was an estimate, and the reason I wanted you to see this is because, so the estimate was about four hundred and fifty thousand, it actually came in about five hundred and eleven. So, that's what I, you know, when we actually received the grant, and to get the timing perspective, it was just last week that I signed off on receiving the grant, we've had the S R two for a while, but again, it goes through, it's got to be, first, the feds have to say, here's how you're going to use it, then the state asks more questions, and then the state finally, after this much time, was able to get it directly to us in a grant form, so, it's, it's a process we go through, and just like, it's called SERVs, which most people don't need that, but it's our system, all of the Title I, Title II, all these grants come into this one location, through the Department of Ed, and then we basically have to accept it, and then start putting together our grant as far as the rest. So, we just got done with that this past week on the S R two, and if you look at the backside, you can see near the bottom, estimate for S R three is about one point one, well, it's one million, one hundred thirty-six thousand, so, we're not talking about little chumps' money, with the fact that we're just putting together the S R two for a half million, and the S R three now for one point one some million, there's a lot of things that we can do, but, and it's, it's one of the reasons that there is no way that neither should we try to do this in a quick manner, I think this is something, it's a three-year process, I think we've got to have a lot of input, we get a lot of meetings set up, we have site leadership teams, the five to six to twelve teams get as much impact, you know, input before the school year ends, and then those leadership teams will be working during this on laying out, and again, so much money, you don't want to just try to lock it all in for the first two years, when you know you've got three years, you can, we can utilize these funds all the way to fall of twenty-four, so when you put that into perspective, that's fiscal twenty-five. So, this is something we really want, and I would encourage that, you know, this, I think, to me, would be something that Shannon definitely would, you know, should be directly involved in, because that's really setting things up for the next three, four years. So, that's one of the reasons I'm, you know, right now, to me, the, what the principals and the leadership teams definitely have to work on is, is the summer school plan for this year, and we also have to wait to find out what comes out of the, the omnibus bill, once it goes, and they get the committee between the House and the Senate, because there's things in there that also open the door to some potential, for instance, in one of the bills, it allows school boards the authority to create their own area learning centers. That opens the door quite a bit compared to the process, as somebody who's filled out one of those, you know, the, the application is about forty pages, so it's a little bit easier if we can just say, hey, look, over the summer, we're going to put this in place, and we're going to have our own ALC, and collect those, the extra revenues, that's not just the money coming in through S R, if you're counting membership days, then you're also getting that much more coming from state day, so that's one of the reasons, the S R three has ninety percent directly to districts, ten percent is set aside, but it's a big chunk, when you look at one point one for us is ninety, is that ninety percent, so, you add that up with all the school districts, that ten percent, that's left for the state to look at how they want to portion it, is a big note, so, there's a lot on the table right now, and it's, I just want you to see all components of this, number one, what the feds are saying, what M R E A is coming up with a Q and A to help school districts, and then our total month's month, so, this is not going to be a, we're just going to do this for, before the next board meeting, it's not, this is a big, but it is, it's exciting, because I, you know, when you look at the fact that ten percent must be set aside for looking at whether you want to call it a learning gap, learning loss, intervention strategies, so it's not just looking at how many teachers and what kind of student-teacher ratios we're going to have, but we can also utilize those funds if we so choose to help with all those intervention needs, so if we want more hiring at different grade levels to help for those kids that need, because it's not going to all be based on title anymore, kids qualify for title, this, finally, we're looking at having the funds available, it shouldn't, you shouldn't need a title as a student if you need help, you just should need that acronym, this way, we can use whatever the funds are, through S R funds, for all the kids that need some help. So, I, it's, to me, it's, it's exciting, we can look at after-school program, summer school, and then the intervention after in the day, so, any, again, I don't expect you to become experts on this one, but just so you know, this is what we'll be spending quite a bit of time, trying to look at, okay, how do we maximize it, and there'll be so many, there's going to end up being so many regional meetings as the S R three comes out, and, you know, between principal meetings and, and regional meetings through Center of Excellence, and what else now, M M D, so, chunk of change. The other thing that we're working on, I'm working on with the elementary principals, is looking at our amount of sections, and it is that time of the year, we've got to get a good handle on that, what we know from last, this past year, we've had, during this year, we've had thirty-five sections of elementary, classroom teachers, and then three distance teachers, so thirty-eight total, right now, in planning, based on our enrollment numbers that are coming in, and because Roseanne does such a nice job getting the communication going, our numbers at the, at the kindergarten, right now, are, when I was looking back to last year, they're, they're coming in quicker this, this year, and, and again, there's a, there are definitely families that are making the decision to have their, their kids stay in kindergarten for another year, so we've got some retentions, we know that there's some potential retentions that you normally don't have in other, other grade levels at the elementary level, right now, for planning purposes, we're looking at a total of thirty-eight sections in the elementary, so that would be similar to what we have right now, remember with the three distance, in comparison, at the beginning of the school year, this year, we have seven hundred and forty students in the elementary, K through five, we've got already a hundred, seven hundred and thirty-one that are registered, so typically, if we've got those type of numbers right now, we typically, you know, when you get into the summer, we get a few more, but what this is going to do is, I, I think we should be prepared to look at our, I've had a discussion with Joe and Margot about the open enrollment policy, remember, we made a switch to it this past year, thinking that this was going to be the year right before the fall, that we'd be opening up and moving all the kids out, well, that didn't happen, we got into the transition, but what we did going into the year was we changed the policy back to a hundred and fifty and a hundred and forty on those open enrollment numbers, and I think if there was a year, when we look at the enrollment, and I'll give you an example, kindergarten at Dilworth right now, right now, we have eighty-seven that are, and this is, this has been changing daily, so it's one of the reasons you don't have a new update yet, eighty-seven as of today at Dilworth, London has been the one that was, been tricky, because we're sitting around twenty, well, that's a crappy number, because you know you're going to get some more, and what do you do with that, and if you try to go to two sections with twenty-two, you know, you know, it's not very efficient. But we're up to 26. So what we'll be doing is we'll be looking at, as we get open enrollment coming in, yes, we will have, we have spots. We're looking at five sections right now at Dilworth at the 80 some, with the potential that we might need six. Here's the thing, we know that we've got a total in the, in the setting that we have, we have 14 classrooms, K one and two at the Dilworth side. So right now, the plan is five sections of kindergarten at Dilworth, four sections of first grade, five sections of second grade. That's the general plan right now based on the notes. And that works pretty well because our numbers at Dilworth are 87 and 82 and 86. So 14 classrooms, that would work well. We're looking at if we, and I think this is something we can just deal with in June because we'll have better numbers by then. But instead of going with that 150, 140 type policy, going with, here's the amount per section and open enrollment ends after that, at that site, which we've done in the past, 22, 21, 22 if it's the tier one. So if it happens to be a child or an employee that's just moving in or somebody who's living in the city limits of Dilworth, we put them in the tier one. And if that's true, more than otherwise, it's tier two. So it leaves you a few extra spots for those on that tier one based on the amount of sections that you have. So we got five sections, we have five more openings for somebody who moves in to the house right there in Dilworth at that site. And that's probably going to be more conducive for this year because I don't think what you want to do, and this is where Shannon and I, just, we've got a list of topics, some of these things to talk about. But if you just leave it open-ended right now and you know you're getting near the end of the spots you've got available for rooms, you're going to have problems potentially where all of a sudden you got 25, 26 because you, you left it at 140, 150. So if you think of it right now, our total numbers at kindergarten are 113. Well, if you leave it by your existing policy, that means you have 37 more kids that, that you have to let come in on open enrollment. And you don't have space for that right now. You will the following year. So that's why I'm saying, this would be the perfect time to switch it back for one year on the policy. You can make those changes every year. Any, any questions about that? I just want to give you a heads up. I think this is going to be really important this year to put that back in. We had it the last couple of years anyway. We just made a switch for one year thinking we're going to be moving into this new elementary, all the kids together, and it's not going to happen. So you can't, I don't think you can take the chance on not knowing what may come. And so I think in June, we want to get the policy switched back so it's ready July one and then just hold off on any more acceptance until the policy is changed. Okay? So enrollment and the revenue coming in, that's been, other than a little court case, which again, we don't have any, anything yet. That was eventful, it was, I enjoy that type of discourse. So I thought, I thought it was, it was, it was very worthwhile. And I, I can tell you that if you look at the bills that are in the House and the Senate, our case, you know, these type of cases have an impact on the bills because, for instance, in the House bill, there is one of the, and I don't, I haven't seen today yet whether it's made it across with the amendments. But one thing that was in the Omnibus Bill at the House level was prohibiting distance simultaneous instruction. And you guys have heard Pandora's Box me way too many times, but that's a big time Pandora's Box because I understand what they were, whoever authored it is thinking. But here's, here's one of the issues that will open up. If you have two small school districts that are sharing an instructor, maybe you have two or three, and they're sharing a particular instructor that they just don't have enough preps for them. And so what's happening is with that instructor, that instructor's probably beaming class to multiple school districts. Well, that's going to be defined as distance teaching and the kids are taken simultaneously in multiple school districts. So there's an example unless somebody gets an amendment to what they're putting in, that's going to create a problem for some of those small school districts, which has nothing to do with 30-minute prep. But it completely opens up a Pandora's Box. So we'll see what happens in the end with this. And I've already, I've made some calls and shot some emails that, hey, are you aware this may happen if you don't address this? So we'll see. And when I, we haven't heard anything yet as far as the judge's ruling. That should be, that, you know, I, I thought it might even be coming today. So it could, it could happen any day. And, and when I get something on that, I will get you an update and then sit down and meet with the principals and decide if there's things we have to do. Otherwise, then we'll get information to the whole district and just go for that. Information to school.
When did they take it under advisement? Was that Thursday?
Uh, Thursday. When, Thursday was the filing of the class briefs. So both sides had to final, had to file their final briefs. And I have thrown that, those into another folder. So now I'll, tonight I'll get you read access to all that if you want to read through some legal briefs. Some will like more than others, but anyway, then you got it. So, but it's, it's, I don't know, it's good.
And then Matt from Comstock sent over Brian and I kind of an updated kind of cost because we knew the cost were going to increase for Comstock being on the project a year longer. So he sent us an email. So all of that, I don't know if all of you guys see, kind of see the dollar ones. We, we knew it was going to be a cost and that I don't think it's going to deter us from doing anything we want to do. So it is what it is. Thank you, COVID. So you're thanking COVID for money and I'm thanking COVID not. No, thank you. But very excited if anybody watches this, if you drive by the sites. Dirt's moving. It's worth doing the happy dance.
And we're trying to work through some things. We do have some communication going out of the city of Dilworth because we have, and we don't have the space over there. And so we have some, some issues potentially with, where are those trailers going to go? When, when the I-beams come, and they're 100 feet each, where are those going to be stored? And we're looking at, and I know that Matt from Comstock had approached City of Dilworth about, since it's a dead end anyway going to the pool area and the main parking lot comes in on the east side, could we just have that sectioned off so that we could have those, everything stored there along that? And we're, we're definitely running into some resistance on that. With the ordinance.
On the road part or on the grass part?
On the, on the road part in particular because what, the problem's going to be that if they're truly going to tear up the whole parking lot and get it all done and basically the parking lot's going right up to the line next to. So where do you put I-beams that are 100, 100 foot long? You know, so it's, where do the trailers go? Where do the I-beams go? And, you know, is it pot? I know they would like to see us put it in the parking lot for Bob Marshall as far as with the trailers. And yes, that could be done. It, it's one of those, it doesn't make a lot of sense when you're, when you're on the job and, oh, we got to drive back over to the project because we can't have the trailers right there. But, you know, it's one of those, you just got to work through some of the politics associated with it. My hope would be that we can get to an agreement that if you look at where Rick's electric trailer is, that is on that directly to the east of where the pool is, on that grassy area there, is there enough room to put three trailers right there? Because nobody else is utilizing that space. And we could put the trailers there, then, you know, we know that the I-beams are more of a short-term. Trailers are going to be there until the project's done. But they're going to be a lot more receptive as far as sectioning off. So just the local traffic can get there. It won't disrupt them at all. But then we put the I-beams along, parallel to the road just, so again, you'd still have one lane for the local traffic. And then, you know, work with the city on, hey, folks, drop your kids off. You know, don't go to it and, and, you know, a dead end to drop your kids off and create traffic congestion. Go into the parking lot and drop them off.
Is there a grassy area between the parking lot for the pool and to just the east of it, between that and the road? Does that make sense?
Between that and, so you said going to the east?
Oh, to the west, I'm sorry.
No. There isn't, like, going from where the parking lot was to the, to the pool and going to the north, there's going to be no space there.
Okay, so I'm talking.
But to the east, there is.
North of the pool, but west of the parking lot.
North of the pool.
Yeah. I, I know there's one, but it's, I don't know how big, I can't think of how big it is off the top. It's about the size of a sidewalk to that road.
Yeah, there, I, I just don't know how, and as far as the power and, and some of those other lovely things. You know, so online, Tracy and I are trying to, you know, set some things. I've, I've been in communication with Chad Olson. We had Tracy talking Peyton, so we're kind of taking this a little bit, but just, just give you a heads up. Yeah, we got little issues with that right now. And we're all trying to use TLC.
Any questions for Brian?
Believe that.
Okay, moving on. 7.1 approval of our April 12 funding. We have motion, so motion by Amy is our second. Second by Laura. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Consent agenda claim is going to come forward.
It is 1,350,878 dollars and 28 cents. It was a big concrete bill that took over a cap of that amount.
I love concrete. All right, also located in your packets are the treasure report, fund total report, Minnesota liquid asset max account, activities account report, and donation as presented. We should read those because someone fired.
Last page, I think.
Last page. As always, we like to recognize people that help our community out. So these are post-prom donations. So thank you to Ray and Jolynn Johnson, Fire Department, Lynchburg Agency, Kirkland Cathy Watt, Bellbeam, Norclan Dental, Olson Fuels and Spas, Huesman, Shriver Masonry, Sanford Health and the Dean, Family Industry. They all gave monetary donations. So we thank them very much for that. We have a motion. Motion by Nicole, is there a second? Second by David. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. 9.1 continuing contract status. This is to approve Alyssa certified staff members who have now obtained continuing contract status. That is in your packet. I think we have a list of six. We have a motion to approve. Motion by Amy, is there a second? Second by Nicole, any questions?
The, okay, there's two different, two different versions, right?
So you have the.
They weren't all in our district that you got something over from other districts.
Correct. So the reason you got the two lists there, if it's their first time spending three years, if it's three years with us, upon their fourth, they have continuing contract. If they've been in Minnesota's public school district for three years in a different one, then upon coming to DGF after their first year, then they have continuing contract status. That's why you got the two different.
After the first year or before their first year?
At the, and as long as they're going to be renewed for year two, come July one, they've got continuing contracts.
They've had one year with us?
Correct. Both of these people are in their first year. And the recommendation from the principals is, yeah, let's have all, all of these people back. And we've, we've had those discussions. It's been an ongoing for the past month, working with the principals. And it's funny, Joe, just today, again, had another observation that, you know, with a first-year person that's doing well, growing quite a bit. This has been a tough year for a first-year teacher. I mean, when you think of, it's like doing a student teaching almost all because you're not, you know, we've gone back and forth between transitioning between these learning models. So, so yeah, I, I think they've, they've done a really good job on trying to keep track of this stuff.
All right, any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. 9.2, this is a non-certified contract for Tommy Pike, paraprofessional effective the start of the 21, 22 school year. Is there a motion?
A motion.
Motion by David, is there a second? Second by Brittany, any questions or?
I don't suppose we know where this goes or.
Mary Ann is not here.
Mary Ann is just trying to.
She's one of hers.
Make sure that she doesn't have.
Ten of them to try to hire an office.
True. She'll put them where they, she needs them to go. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 9.3, this is a non-renewal for the contract of Gina Sidik, her business manager at the end of this school year, 2020, 2021 fiscal year. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Motion by Ronnie, is there a second? We got Dave over here. Any questions?
I don't know. I know this other one, we've got one coming up for advertising. What's the situation with advertising for this then? They can do, you can do that automatically once we.
We're, we've already got that process.
We don't have to have a motion to advertise your position.
No, as long as we know that that position is, is still open, continuing position, we're starting that process.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 9.4, this is for the administrative positions for the fiscal year 22. This is to approve 2.02 F T E assistant principal positions for the 2021, 22 school year. Is there a motion to approve?
Some.
Motion by Laura, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brittany. Any questions or discussions?
And, and this is why, because of the fact that these positions have not been in place, why we've got to have to approve the positions. Then we will advertise because they're not existing positions.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. 10, board comments, future agenda items, Operations Committee meeting Monday, May 10th at 5:00 here in the High School Media Center. And the next board meeting Monday, May 10th at 6:00 p.m. in the High School Media Center phone. Any other things we need to clean house about or anything?
We'll probably look to have, like I said, we're going to have a meeting with Shannon over the next two days. Now we've got the positions approved. Then we'll get those advertised right away. And we got to get a timeline set up. So I think we've got to have a personnel fiscal meeting sometime over the course of the next week. Once we get a few more details.
Ryan, would a, like an evening, like over Google Meet work?
Yeah, Google Meet would work better for that.
Like maybe like an 8 o'clock meeting one night or something if you're.
I'll, I'll look for one if it's going to rain in particular.
It's not going to rain anywhere. Yeah, we don't want any more rain. Our rate meeting's adjourned at 6:49. Do Brittany want to shut that recording off about? Yes, thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night, Brittany. Good morning, Brittany. Hi, Ryan, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, it's what I think it is.
No, not, not.